Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona. It will be held July 7th, 2020 at 6:00 PM. If we could, please have the clerk take a roll.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Howdegy?
Here.
Councilmember Naron?
Here.
Councilmember Wildin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mayor Olensky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during this summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything to report? Yes, sir.
It's been so long since we had a regular meeting, but I think Ron and I were at the ribbon cutting for Ogden Ranch Road after that last meeting, so it is now open. It's absolutely beautiful. It's phenomenal. It's a really great asset to the city, and the price was right. And we had a regular quarterly NACOG meeting online. Ron attended that, too. It went well. There was nothing terribly exciting or it had to do with us anything specifically, but we did have our meeting still, and that's it.
Very good, all right. Any other council members? Mr. Corbin?
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. I'll just follow up on the vice mayor's comments on NACOG. The one thing that I found interesting was they, their budget has increased significantly. So during hard times, economically difficult times, they get more funding. So if you work through NACOG or you can get resources through NACOG, now's a great time to reach out to them. A lot of their federal programs are more than fully funded, so they're a great partner, whether it be help with utilities, or the young, or the elderly, or whatever it is you use NACOG for, don't forget about them. They have resources that they don't normally have. So other than that, it was a follow-up, just a regular meeting, but, and I'll just follow up also on the vice mayor. The price was right, just as a reminder, that was free. Just if you're wondering in the City of Cottonwood what the right price is, free is what we go for. So thank you county supervisor Garrison and everybody who helped make that happen. Thank you David for helping supervise that and making sure it met city standards, so thank you. The Main Street Road Diet Project is actually scheduled to begin Monday, July 20th. So we've been talking about this before I started with the city, and we've been talking about it for the year and a half I've been here, and David is going to get it across the finish line. Thank you to our former Public Works Manager, Robert Winicki, and everybody who's brought this to fruition, but you'll begin to see, the businesses will be contacted about the road, what'll be closed, what'll be open as we work through the paving, the, not the paving, the striping, but we're very excited about the Road Diet actually starting Monday, July 20th. Then, the second virtual open house for Parks and Recreation Master Plan will be on July 16th, starting at 4:00 PM. The master plan will focus on how to improve our parks and will identify opportunities for future growth. Your voice is an important component of the process. Please join us to learn more about the master planning process and provide your input. Visit cottonwoodparkmasterplan.com for all details about the master plan. And if I sounded funny just now, I'm trying to hold back a laugh because I was wondering why I didn't need glasses. Sandra's finally printing this in extra-large font, so I can read it, so thank you Sandra. And then finally, the Fourth of July celebration went off with almost no hitches. It was peaceful, it was great, over 300 cars attended. It was, it was a great event. Thank you fire chief for letting that happen, and Public Works, and Parks, and all the other city departments, and the fairgrounds, of course, for letting us send them off there, and our sponsors. So great event, I was glad we could do it.
Great. All right, thank you for that. And next is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16, 2020, and I'll motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes are approved. And next is the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. And there's five items tonight on the consent agenda. I'll go ahead and read them out by title, and if there's anyone in the audience who would like an item pooled for discussion, please, everyone's staring at me like I'm not speaking loud enough, then please indicate so by raising your hand, and if there's a council member that would like to have an item pooled, also indicate by raising your hand or just throwing something at me. Item one, resolution number 3061, appointing Jerry Scott as an administrative hearing officer for the city. Item two, proposal for free fair transit for the Cottonwood Area Transit and Verde Links Transit Systems through December 31, 2020. Item three is a fair festival liquor license application submitted by John McLaughlin, applicant for Cellar 433 by 21 grams located at 909 North Main Street, Suite A. Item four is resolution number 3062, designating the city's deputy city manager as the city's agent for applying for certain disaster relief assistance through the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. And item five is discussion, consideration, and possible approval of a proposed amendment to the access agreement with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality for additional expanded environmental remediation activities at the State Route 260 Main Street Water Quality Assurance revolving fund site near the intersection of Main Street and Mingus Avenue. Is there anybody that would like an item pooled from the consent agenda? Then I would motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the consent agenda is approved. If we could, please have the clerk read resolutions number 3061 and 3062 by title only.
Resolution number 3061, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, appointing Jerry Scott as an administrative hearing officer for the city. Resolution number 3062, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving the designation of applicant's agent form submission to the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, and designating the city's deputy city manager as the city's agent for applying for certain public assistance. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, now we roll into new business. Following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First item tonight is a public hearing regarding adoption of the city's final budget for fiscal year 2021. And before we begin, if you don't mind, folks, there are yellow forms in the back of the room, and I believe Sandra Solis has some for you. If anybody would like to speak tonight regarding an item that's on the agenda, please fill out one of these forms, and we'll call you up in the order that I receive them. And again, this is the public hearing regarding the adoption of the city's final budget for fiscal year 2021. Take it away.
I am personally praying for this, Cottonwood. As Mayor Olensky said, this is the time for the public hearing for the adoption of fiscal year 2021 budget, so we'd like to open the floor for anyone who'd like to comment.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment on the adoption of the budget? And Mary Ann, have we received any comments by email from anyone?
None regarding the budget.
None regarding the budget, okay, very good. All right, hearing none, then we'll go ahead and close the floor to the public and move on to resolution number 3060, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and establishing an expenditure limitation.
So since the adoption of the tentative budget a few weeks ago, there's been two small changes to the budget. We changed a engineering position from a range 33 down to a 30, which was no additional cost, and then we added a unfunded public works director position at a range 33, and if we have the funding later in the year, we will come back and ask to fill that position if it's needed. And then we also transferred over one drainage improvement project from the current fiscal, well, not current anymore, 2020 fiscal year to the 2021 fiscal year. It did not change the expenditure limitation, it was just a carryover. And so the expenditure limitation is $79,468,850. This is slightly higher than the adopted, the revised budget by 9.5 million, and this is due to carryovers, projects that weren't completed, and reserves. We have, as you know, three full-time added positions, all in water and wastewater, none in the general fund, and then we reclassified five positions, four full-time, and then we, five full-time, and then we did one part-time position. We increased our officials' pay from 18 to $25 an hour to compete with the surrounding areas that are paying 25. There is no merit, there is no COLA. Some other things that were adjusted was health insurance increased by 10%, and that was employee and employer portions both increased, and then Arizona State Retirement, Public Safety Retirement, both increased by, Arizona State Retirement by not even a percent, and then Public Safety by about 10%. There was capital equipment of 1.4 million and capital projects of 16 million, including finishing Mingus Avenue and doing the 260 water line, and that includes all equipment for, and capital projects for all funds, not just the general fund.
All right. Any questions from council, from Ms. Lennon?
I did just have a question. I'm not sure if it's best for Ms. Lennon or for our city manager, and I guess just the revised numbers that we recently, or revised estimates from the state that we recently received are not that large, and it looks like we can, we can absorb the estimates with this budget, but I did, you know, I'm not our finance expert, so can you address that, please?
Yes, we did just receive revised numbers for our urban revenue sharing that comes from the state and from our portion of the state's TPT tax, and they revised them down, which we kind of anticipated. We did try to budget it a little bit lower than what they had originally told us, and we're about $30,000 off. We can definitely absorb that in the budget. Hopefully, we will have more sales tax, city sales tax to cover up the difference, but if we don't, we, we have plenty of, we have plenty of flexibility in our budget to be able to absorb that 30,000.
Excellent, thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No? Okay, well, just commend you and your staff for, again, you know, completing basically one budget and then another with the onset of COVID, and, you know, your numbers are tracking exceptionally well, I think, to what the state's predicted, so I appreciate you guys being conservative in that and building in flexibility. So hats off to you and your, and your team.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank Helen Bartels, who's our budget analyst, who's not here tonight, so gotta mention her. She does a lot behind the scenes.
All right, any other discussions? Please.
I move to approve the resolution 3060, adopting the city's proposed fiscal year 2021 final budget as presented, and establishing the city's fiscal year 2021 final expenditure limitation at $79,468,850.
All right, councilmember Wildin made the motion, and the vice mayor seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdegy?
Yes.
Councilmember Naron?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, and thank you, council. If we could have the clerk read resolution number 3060 by title only.
Resolution number 3060, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and establishing an expenditure limitation. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, next, under new business is item three, acceptance of approximately 1.4 million in AZ Cares Funds from the state of Arizona for public safety personnel salaries and employee-related expenses.
Hello again. As we have mentioned before, the Arizona Cares Act allotted 441 million to the governor's office, and 50% of that he's passing on to cities and towns and counties to help with the COVID-19 response. They asked for an expenditure reporting of our public safety retirement for last year's numbers, and our public safety employees and all their employee benefits and everything for last year's numbers, for 2019, 2020, 2018, 2019, and then part of 2019, 2020, and then what we estimated we would spend between July of 2020, July 2020 to December, and we meet the criteria without a problem. Our public safety retirement alone is more than the 1.4 million that they allotted to us. So the application has been submitted, everything is ready to go, we just need to get council's approval to accept that, and to accept that grant, because it is a federal grant.
Right. Any discussion from council? Yes.
Question, again, I keep asking this. I want to be, be clear that we can use this money other than what is specified here, is that correct?
Yes, we, since it's, it's basically what it's doing is it's paying for the expenditures of our public safety retirement personnel for that time period, so that money then would get reallocated somewhere else.
Okay.
All right. And if you could, just for the benefit of the public, let us know what we're going to do with this money.
Well, currently, we're going to put the money into reserves and let it sit for at least till next budget year, and then next budget year, we'll bring back some ideas and some suggestions from council on how to spend that, just to make sure that we're good for all of 2021 with our revenue projections and everything that we have in our current budget.
Okay, thank you. All right. Anything else?
Just thank you for wanting to put that in reserves, because I think that's a great idea to make sure we're okay through the crisis.
Right, right. All right.
Well, then, if we're ready, I'll go ahead and move to accept the award of AZ Cares Funds from the state of Arizona to fund public safety personnel salaries and employee-related expenses in the amount of 1.4 million, $6,725, to approve of grant agreement, to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement on the city's behalf, and to authorize the taking of any additional actions required to comply with the terms and conditions of the grant.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Henry made the motion, and councilmember Naron seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdegy?
Yes.
Councilmember Naron?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is item four, discussion, consideration, and possible legal action to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a fiscal year 2020 to 2021 service, sponsorship, and funding agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor, council, a little bit of history on this. As you know, earlier this year, there was a planned work session between the city council and the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. We got it scheduled, had a date on the books, and then COVID hit, and we canceled. And as we began to evaluate our current financial situation, we decided not to renew the contract with the chamber. So there've been several emails and conversations, so we were going to have another meeting last month with a smaller group to begin to talk about what the new relationship would look like. That did not come to fruition, to no fault of the chamber. So I asked the chamber what we needed to do to make sure that they could continue throughout this year in support of our business community, which is the main goal of today's request. It's not about tourism necessarily, it's really about making sure that they can continue to support our business community. So Christian met with his leaders, and they submitted the request that's in your packet. The first request was for $60,000 to operate the visitors' center, which they've been operating for a long time, and they operated out of their current facility, and they asked for 60,000 to do that. I'm supportive of that. We could do it, but it would be very difficult. It would be, take a lot of resources to move it over, and some coordination, and just, we couldn't do it as quickly as they're currently doing it. So I recommend that while we work through future negotiations about what the relationship looks like, go ahead and funding that to make sure it stays open. I've talked to Christian briefly, or through email today, about making sure it could be open for six days a week, making sure that it's open on Saturdays as well. And then they asked for another 10,000 in a sponsorship. For me, this is really about supporting the business community. This would be just a, a significant sponsorship to the organization to make sure that they could provide all of the functions that they do, communications, educational assistance, updates, all the things that a chamber does that would go towards that, and we would receive the benefits of having a sponsorship. They made a couple other offers in there that I don't think we need to take up at this time. I think we have other plans or can manage it through the city on its own. So again, I recommend that we go ahead and do all of the 70,000, or some, it's up to council if they wanted to change that up a little bit or whatever, but I do recommend that we go ahead and continue that relationship, allow us for some continuity of service, and to make sure that our business community is being assisted as needed. For the future, there is a small group plan, we're looking for early August to begin defining what that relationship looks like, and then we'll come back to the Fuller Council and the Fuller Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors in the fall. Hopefully, it'll be, these bands will be lifted, and we can start meeting in larger groups, and we can have that meeting in the fall, well before budget discussions for the following year, so that staff and the chamber staff have direction from the appointed and elected leaders on how they want us to move forward. So there's a plan in place to address this through the year, but I did not want to continue to hold the chamber in a negative way while we figure this out. None of this current situation is they're doing, and so I'm willing to recommend that you all approve that. Oh, and the finances. Councilmember Henry, I'll just go and answer the question, yes, we have the funding. So as you know, through the grants that we received from the Cares Act for our transit, they ended up funding it fully. So the city's matching portion, and actually all of our partners' matching portions, including some capital improvement buses, including the buses, yes, including the buses, are fully funded through the Cares Grant. So we can use that money, one-time funding, because next year we'll need it to go back to transit, but I believe next year we can talk about PED tax and what portion would go to the chamber, but for this year, we can move that general fund money that would normally go to transit, and we could use it to cover this cost. So it's funded, there's no negative impact on our transit operations or our general fund. And I believe, yes, Christian is here, the director, and then the president or chairman of their board is also here to answer questions or give a presentation as well if you'd like.
Okay, very good. And council, before we invite our CEO up, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't have a question, but I do appreciate, you know, Ron's work on this.
Okay. All right.
Ron? I'm sorry, mayor?
Yes.
One thing I did notice is the requested action and the suggested motion are two different things. One reads 70,000, the other reads up to 70,000. So when the, whoever makes the motion, I am hoping and suggesting they make it of $70,000.
Okay.
I think that's because the materials are for the different amounts, if that makes sense.
Henry?
The request, I think as our, and Ron, if you'd like to address this.
I will. Mr. Mayor, so this is really council's decision. There are three options on the table, I'm recommending two, but you could fund one and not the other. So if your motion was just for the visitor center, which is, you know, plausible, then you would make the motion for 60,000. If you didn't want to do that, and you only wanted to do the sponsorship, then the motion would be for $10,000, and if you're okay with doing both of those, it would be for 70,000.
Got it, thank you.
Got it, okay, great. All right, Christian, Mr. Del Rio, would you like to come up and make a presentation? And it looks like you're joined by your president as well, as maybe one or two other board members? All right, great. Good evening.
Thank you, how are you? Do you have any questions?
Do we have any, did you want to make a just brief?
I just want to say that, you know, we value the partnership that we've had over the many years. I've been with the chamber for 13 years, and we've been working very well together. Looking forward to continuing that partnership moving forward. Would love to hear what, what your expectations are and how we can meet that. Really looking forward to having that joint meeting. Seems to be being pushed out each time because of everything that's going on, but again, we would just love to have some open dialogue with you, and look forward to working with you, continue working with you.
Very good.
Okay.
All right. Any questions for, for Mr. Del Rio?
No, no questions, but I do want to comment. As Mr. Corbin stated, the pushing back of the meeting has had nothing to do, from my, you know, perspective as a member of that subcommittee with the chamber, and I do appreciate the chamber's patience with, with events and having to reschedule that meeting, and also understanding that we're trying to balance.
Sure. You're in a difficult position, we absolutely understand. The current climate we're in is unprecedented, and we're feeling the pinch just as everybody else, as, as well as you, and so we appreciate your consideration and.
So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or? No, okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, council, how would you like to move forward?
Have a little discussion or comments?
Yep.
Work around?
I can't hear anything, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We'll just open it up for deliberation then from the council.
I think if I can make, if we can move the mics a little closer to our faces, maybe we can all hear each other a little bit better, because I'm having trouble hearing what you guys are saying from that end. Thank you.
Discussion from council?
Should I start?
Sure, please.
Okay. I have no problem with the 60,000, I think that's reasonable and it's fair. As far as the $10,000 partnership, membership thing, there was a bit too cozy relationship between council and chamber in the past with members being on both bodies, and when I look at this, I see things like, we give them $10,000 for this membership, and we get tickets, and we get things back. I think we should be very sensitive about that, getting something for us giving them money. Just like with the Old Town Association, we fund the Old Town Association. I do not expect, nor should we get free meals from any of their members, so I just, I'm just really, I said, 60,000 is fine, I don't feel comfortable with a, with a membership-sponsored partnership at this time. That's all I've got on it.
Okay. Any other council members? I'm looking at you, Ms. Wildin, so how about you?
Well, I agree with what you said regarding getting back, that sort of thing. So I hate to see it split like that. I, however, am in favor of the 70,000 instead of the 60,000.
So to be clear, you're fine with 70,000, but you agree that the sponsorship should be off the table?
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Howdegy?
I think I'll agree with the councilmember Willhouse on this, on this issue.
Okay. Ms. Henry?
I couldn't understand that, I'm sorry.
He said that he agrees with councilmember Wildin on this issue.
My mic was closed.
It is, I can hear you now, so I rely a lot on reading lips, I'm sorry, councilmember Howdegy. I don't have, we do have the funds, I'm told, able to divert to the chamber at this, for this fiscal year. I don't. I don't have a problem with the 70,000. However, as I shared with some of the chamber board members with which I spoke, we do have to make sure we are being, we know where the money is going to and what they're going to do with it here. The options we were given was a 60, a 10, and then the supporting travel riders and bus tours. And so again, I don't mind funding up to the 70, but what are we funding exactly with that 70 instead of the 60 and then the chamber partner sponsorship? Folks have brought up, and I brought this up in some conversations, the inquiry into Sedona's Chamber of Commerce that we all, you know, saw on the, you know, periphery some years ago. And I just want to make sure if we're giving them funds, we know, you know, what the expectations and or uses.
Okay.
But otherwise, I would support that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, a couple things. We can strike, we wrote the, we, Steve did a good job of writing this motion so that we can write a one-year agreement. It doesn't have to come back to council. We can take out, you know, gifting of tickets or whatever. I hope there are events this year. I'm still nervous that there are going to be, not going to be events, but if there's events, we can, we can take some of that out and we can, we will put in, in the agreement, expectations for visitors to the visitor center. There will be a number in there that we, for them to grow towards, COVID aside, you know, the current pandemic aside. I know that they've been making increased efforts on marketing through social media. So they'll continue to do that and we'll have a measure of that. So we'll, we'll write a one-year agreement as we work through the bigger agreement or bigger relationship. So we'll clarify those expectations. The biggest change that I didn't see in there that I wanted to make sure was mentioned was the Saturday, going to six days a week at the price tag of 60,000. I think being open on Saturdays is pretty important. So we can, we can do that. And then the membership, the 10,000, is really about making sure that they provide services to our businesses. So resources, their newsletter, their educational opportunities, the events, help sponsor those events if they end up putting them on and those kinds of things. So it's really meant for their traditional, and feel free to correct me, Christian, but their traditional business services that they provide is what that other 10,000 would go for. It's not really meant for personnel. Normally, the larger amount, the bed tax amount is more, helps fund their staffing. Not saying none of this will go towards staffing, but that's not, this isn't meant to do that. It's meant to make sure that they can provide services to the business community.
Right. Okay. Did you have something to add there, sir?
I just wanted to, I'm sorry. I just wanted to clarify that the sponsorship really isn't necessarily about tickets to events and whatnot. It was more about promoting Cottonwood itself, promoting the businesses. A lot of that money would go towards our newsletter. The city would be able to participate, put information in our newsletter that goes over to over 700-plus members. So it's a, it's a great way and an opportunity for the city to reach our business members.
Sure.
So just echoing what Ron was saying on that. And we're willing to adjust that any way you see fit and willing to discuss that, so.
Very good. Thank you. And I agree with Vice Mayor on that. I think obviously this is catered more toward business sponsorships. Of course, we're not necessarily a business, so we can't accept the free tickets and what else.
There are many other outlets through our printed member directory, our online directory, a lot of other ways for us to promote the city itself as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So can I elaborate on my comments?
Sure, please.
Okay, so then as long as we strike anything from that that would look like a gift, I'm okay with that. I really want to see us stepping up and supporting our businesses. They are really, really needing it right now. So in light of that too, please get out there and spend your money locally. Go out and support these people. They really need it. Thank you.
And I agree. I think as long as we do avoid that issue and what, you know, I heard feedback that our chamber during COVID has been calling our businesses, reaching out, what can we do, what, you know, help working to get folks, businesses directed to the right resources. And we still need that vital support. We've been using that term, supporting those services. So I think again, as long as everything we've discussed is incorporated in that agreement, I would fully support that.
Okay, very good. Councilmember Naren, did you, oh, sorry.
No, no.
Councilmember Naren, did you have any comments to add?
Nothing additional. I agree with striking the gift things too, but I'm okay with the $70,000 to support business.
Okay, great. And then councilmember Hulse?
I would agree as well. Striking the freebies is more than understandable and I think the 70,000 is a good investment for us and for the chamber.
Great. And I would agree. Mr. Horton?
So, Mr. Mayor, in light of this conversation, I just, so the council is clear, and I'm hearing the council be clear about this, that the council accepts that there can be $70,000 worth of value provided to the city and the public in exchange for the $70,000. However, staff structures that agreement, but you're basically making a finding that the chamber can provide $70,000 worth of value to the city and then directing staff to negotiate and execute a contract that basically provides for those services in exchange for that value.
Correct. That's my understanding. I think we're all comfortable having staff negotiate that contract. Yeah. Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, then I'm ready for a motion.
Make a motion. I move to authorize the provision of up to $70,000 in funding to the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute on behalf of the city an agreement setting forth the specific services, activities, performance expectations, and deliverables to be provided in exchange for those funds.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Hulse made the motion and councilmember Wildon seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodeggi?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, very good. And Christian and to the board, thanks very much to you all for your patience, your partnership. And we will get back on track and get these meetings scheduled so we can continue to move forward. Thank you. Okay, next is cooperative use of the City of Goodyear contract for the purchase and installation of new automated meter-reading water meters and associated telemetry-supporting equipment. Mr. Whitmer?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, it gives me great pleasure to come before you to talk about this item on the agenda. As most of you know, meter reading is a crucial task performed by utilities. Without it, we'd be in deep trouble. The only problem with what, with meter reading that we currently have within the city is that it's done manually. It's very labor-intensive, it's prone to inaccuracies, and it's also very hazardous this time, knowing the train that we have to deal with out here. Not to mention, some of our homeowners have a tendency to build in alleys and other places, making it very difficult to get to the meters at a time. What this will do by changing these meters out, rather than having to manually go to each and every meter every month, we can literally drive by or sit a vehicle at the highest point of elevation within the subdivision and rapidly collect all those meter reads within minutes. The accuracy, it's infallible. Once it's set up and it's operating correctly. The efficiency is second to none. Right now, it takes three people working three days continuously just to do the Zone Four or Vertiville Seven, which is where we're proposing to start with this program. This would be the first year of a multiple-year effort to change out all the meters within the city. In addition to be in, providing more accuracy and efficiency for the city, it also will improve our customer service. By that I mean is currently, if we go out and we read a meter and all of a sudden they have a leak in their system, it may be 30 days or more before we actually know that there's been a leak. And there's nothing worse than having a customer call in when they get their bill and their bill is over $1,000 for the month. What this does with these meters here is it regularly monitors those meters. And if it detects a meter showing water flowing for 24 hours, it gives us a red flag, which then we can contact the customer right then and inform them that they either have a potential leak or they have a faucet running somewhere in their yard that they're unaware of, so that they can immediately address it before it begins, gets to a problem when they get a bill that's a culture shock. So like I said, this is the first of a multi-year changeout of the meters throughout the city if you approve it. And with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Whitmer? Yes.
One question. When you're changing out the meters, is there a chance or a possibility, probably, that there may be, that you could cause damage to the connection to the house or the business?
Shouldn't, shouldn't be any change, or shouldn't be any potential for, in fact, if we cause the damage, we'll repair it.
Okay.
So that's not a problem.
Okay. Yes, sir.
How many years are you anticipating to complete this project?
Probably five to six years.
Okay.
If we had the budget, we'd do it all at once, but as you can see, it's a rather hefty budget for what we're doing here.
I just had a couple of questions too. So once they're installed, are we able to maintain and calibrate and make sure the system is up and running? Do we have the equipment and the training here, or is this something that we're going to have to then have, you know, third-party vendors come and do?
Absolutely. I mean, we have been putting in these type of meters all along. We just haven't had the automatic reading apparatus that we will be attaching to the meters that are already in place. In those certain homes where we haven't changed out the meters yet, they'll be getting a whole brand-new meter and the telemetry stuff in order to accommodate it. So yes, we will have all the equipment necessary to continue to maintain those meters once they're installed. And it is compatible with Springbrook, so it should be just an easy automatic download into Springbrook for billing purposes.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, can I just add something? Because I want to make sure that council is aware of how we staff, because we're very thin in that department. So one of the questions I received is what are those people going to do for those three days when they're not collecting numbers anymore? That's the same crew that does the work. That's the same crew that does our fixing and our stopping of leaks and all of our construction. We don't have a water meter crew and then a construction crew. So that'll give them more time to actually work on improving the overall system and responding to leaks in our construction projects that take way too long because they're off doing other things. So it is a big win for the city, customer service-wise, and then for efficiency of work. It's just, it's significant.
I actually had the opposite concern, making sure we're not automating and losing any staff when we're properly installed. But with the length, the timeline, I don't know that that would be likely.
Oh, no, there's, there's no, no intention to redo staffing on this one. As, as Ron just said, we're pretty, we're operating pretty much at a bare-bones situation. We only have one crew for construction and maintenance without the three meter readers. When they're not meter-reading meters, they're working construction, which gives us two crews, which when you have 240 leaks a year on average, that's a lot of leaks to repair. That's pretty significant. So we need both crews at some times. And in fact, when we had like the main break the other day in front of the Chase Bank, major leak, that takes everybody we've got in order to get that thing fixed in a timely manner, so.
All right. That anticipates my questions, so. Any other discussion? No? Okay. I'm ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the cooperative use of the City of Goodyear contract number CON-16-3378A with Core and Main LP formerly known as HD Supply Water Works Limited for the purchase and installation of new automated read water meters and associated telemetry-supporting equipment in an amount not to exceed $382,958.86.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Naren made the motion. Vice Mayor seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Hodeggi?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next, item six is ordinance number 680, an ordinance relating to tiny houses. This is the first reading. Evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is a version that's almost identical to the version that we brought to you back in May, so I have a greatly abbreviated presentation for you tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of it. And the idea is not to, is not to create any new regulations for tiny houses, but to instead make it clear how the tiny houses fit into the regulations that we've already got. So we're proposing new definitions for a tiny house, revised definitions for single-family dwelling and factory-built building. And in the zoning classification descriptions, it includes tiny houses as either a primary residence or guest house in permitted and conditional, and conditional uses. And in general provisions in the code, description of the three types of tiny houses. And there are three types that we've described, all would be under 300 feet, excuse me, 400 square feet. The first type would be a recreational vehicle, and that's one that's brought in off-site that's got wheels. It would be in all respects an RV. We regulate it as an RV. The only place it could go is an RV park or anywhere else an RV could go. The second type would be an RV type, except you could bring it in, take the wheels off, put it on a foundation. We would regulate that as more or less a manufactured home, and that would have to meet manufactured home codes. And that could go in certain zones, in the mobile home MH and the R4 zones as a primary residence and in the other zones as a guest house. And the third type would be a site built, which is something that's built from the ground, stick-built. It could go in today under our codes. It just happens to be under 400 square feet. So we have a provision for that as well. And that would have to meet all current building codes. That's pretty much the highlights unless you have questions.
Any questions for Mr. Davis?
No, but you guys did a really good job on it.
Really, you did.
Everybody that worked on this did a great job. Presentation was fantastic, so kudos.
Thank you.
I would agree. I think you certainly cleared up a lot of things from where we first started to where we landed. It's definitely a lot clearer and I think it's going to be a great benefit. All right, nothing else. This is just the first reading, so we'll bring you back here in a couple weeks for the second reading and a vote. Thank you.
Very good.
Mary Ann, would you please read ordinance number 680 by Todd Lonely?
Ordinance number 680, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Arizona relating to tiny houses. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, next is ordinance number 681, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 408 outdoor lighting by deleting section G10 and G18, note 2, in their entirety and adding new sections G10 and G18, note 2, first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is just a slight amendment to our ordinance. 408G10 defines the amount of light output in terms of lumens that it's allowed in residential zones, and it shall not exceed 10,000 lumens per acre. Well, the problem has been that when you get smaller lots, smaller than half an acre, that lumens per acre gets pretty small. And we've had people building houses say that's a really small level of lighting. And so what we're proposing is putting a floor on that, basically. Anything under half an acre lot could have 44, excuse me, 4,500 lumens. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Can you just, just for the benefit of the public, talk about our dark, our dark sky standing and how this won't affect it?
Right. We, when we proposed the 4,500 lumens, we researched what other communities are doing and found that 4,500 is a pretty good level that will still give decent output and still fall within the dark sky goals.
Okay. Questions? No?[1745.83] Questions? No? All right. First reading, so we'll bring you back. Thank you. Okay. Next up, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Jimenez, could you read ordinance number 681 by title only?
Ordinance number 681, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending section 408 outdoor lighting by deleting section G10 and G18, note 2, in their entirety, and adding a new section, G10 and G18, note 2.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next is ordinance number 682, amending Title II, Chapter 2.04, mayor of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting section F of Chapter 2.02.030 in its entirety and adding a new section, 2.02.030F. And this is the first reading, and this is sponsored by Vice Mayor Matthews and Councilmember Henry. Would one of you like to start?
I'll go ahead and start. There's been a lot of misinformation about, out there about what this is, what it's about. One of our local newspapers put out a headline that kind of misled a lot of people. So, I'd just like to start out with what this ordinance is not. This ordinance is not a commentary on the mayor's recent proclamation and mandate. It is not an opinion on the wearing of face masks. It is not a repeal of the mayor's veto power. The mayor does not, and to my knowledge, has never had veto power. It's not a political statement to garner votes for any council member. I am assured, and you should be also, that there's no member on this council that makes a decision based on how somebody might vote for them in an election. This ordinance is specifically to restore the citizens' confidence in the democratic process and reassure the citizens of Cottonwood that their elected representatives are their voice and their collective vote. It does not infringe on the ability of the mayor to make any proclamation and any accompanying mandate when legal entitled to do so. What it does, if the mayor chooses not to make that proclamation, to bring it before council for a vote, he or she is obligated to abide by that vote on that issue for a period of 30 days or until council decides to issue, to consider it again within that 30-day period as things change. So, if I haven't covered anything, I'll pass it off to my co-sponsor there to fill in anything.
You covered it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'll open it up for discussion from council.
All I can say is I'm in agreement with it, and well done to both council members. So, thank you.
I would agree. I think it removes the animosity that occurred a couple of weeks ago and misunderstandings, and I think this is a little more plain. And from what I understand, from what Vice Mayor Matthews said, even if the council were to vote against something that you would want as mayor to pass, it could be readdressed anytime during that 30-day period by simply calling another special council meeting to review and reevaluate the decisions that were made by council. Is that not correct?
That would be, yes.
So, I think all we're doing is eliminating a situation that we put the mayor in a couple of weeks ago, which was very uncomfortable for him and the council.
Yes.
Any other council members?
Just sitting here right now, and I know we have a, the reading coming up in a couple of weeks, the second reading. I would just like to say that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your ability to work with people and to make decisions, and tough decisions. In the 10 years that I was the mayor, I never had to, I didn't even know about this issue of being able to veto, so, you know, enough of that. But as far as using it as a, so we say, it's not a choice. It's for the emergencies, and there can be countless emergencies, of which we are in one with this COVID-19. So, all I can say, aside from all the things that have been said in the medias and around town and wherever, is that I appreciate what you did and the courage you took to do that.
Just, just one more thing, and just to make this public, and I've told the mayor the same thing, is that, and I believe everybody on this council would agree, I have never questioned or had reason to question the motives of any decision the mayor has ever made, and I still do not. He has the best intentions and the best motives with everything he does, and I'm very proud to serve alongside him. Thank you.
Councilmember Narin, did you have any comments?
This has been a tough issue all the way around. And I do fully support the mayor's proclamation, once he made the proclamation, regardless of my vote at the last meeting. And I have not questioned his motives for making the proclamation after that meeting as occurred. I really struggled over that decision, and before that meeting, and during that meeting, and after that meeting. So, I feel that if this ordinance were to pass, it would encourage this mayor and future mayors, when we have a state of emergency, and they feel very strongly about what action needs to be taken, that they would take that action by proclamation and take it sooner than they could convene a special council. And so, I lean towards agreeing with this measure just so that we could get those emergency proclamations made by the mayor quicker in emergencies in the future. Does that make sense? I hope, to everybody. The little bit of feedback that I've gotten so far from the community, and I hope to get a lot more feedback in the next two weeks before we vote on this, is leaning towards not wanting us to pass this ordinance, but that's, I think, has a lot to do with the misinformation that Vice Mayor Matthews is talking about. And in no way would, would passing this ordinance take away the proclamation that the mayor has made. That proclamation stands. This council has no authority to overturn a mayor's proclamation, and nor would I want to, and I don't think any of the members of this council would. I do want to say that I do, and I just kind of want to put this out there, and I hope this is appropriate enough, but some of the feedback I've gotten in the last couple of days is about how we should be backing the mayor, and we are. And in all the messaging I've been putting out, I am encouraging everybody who can safely wear a mask to do so, to protect themselves and others, and to wash your hands frequently, and to socially distance as much as possible. And regardless of how this vote goes about this ordinance, my position on that doesn't change. We all need to do that, whatever part of that is safe for us to do so, in order to keep everybody safe. The numbers in Cottonwood have risen some, but not as much as in other areas of Arizona. And I hope that that trend continues, that we don't have the rising numbers they have in other areas of Arizona, and that our numbers start to come down very soon. So, at this point, I hope, like I said, to get a lot of feedback from the community in the next two weeks about what direction you'd like us to take in regards to this ordinance, because I, you know, I got on this council to be the voice of the people, and so I would like to hear from everybody, your thoughts on this before we have to vote on it in two weeks, please.
Councilmember Henry, did you have anything?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
I'll just share my thoughts with the ordinance, and I respect Vice Mayor and Councilmember Henry's, you know, authority to place this on the agenda for council discussion. My main concern with the ordinance is that I think it will bind future mayors to, thank you. It'll, it'll shoehorn future mayors into sidestepping the council during an emergency proclamation and sidestepping the public during an emergency proclamation. So, I think, you know, my concern is that we, the future mayor may just not take the risk, if you will, to bring this forward in a, in a public setting. I think that they would just go ahead and proclaim without consulting council. And I said it at the meeting, and I'll say it again, I take great value in consulting with my colleagues up here and providing a public forum for discussion. It's not often that emergency proclamations need to be proclaimed. Unfortunately, I'm in that position where I had to do that. But we are in a crisis situation, and that's the other part of this, is that there's the 30-day stay in this, and I think, you know, the reason mayors are able to proclaim is based on emergencies, and I think that the 30-day stay is, will be too cumbersome in the event of an emergency. So, I just, I feel like this is going to be a detriment to future mayors and the public. Those are my thoughts.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Okay. So, this also does not preclude any future mayor from bringing this before council. I sit, sat in on a very long meeting, watched Sedona convene and talk about the same issue. So, it doesn't preclude any mayor from bringing council together and sitting down and having a discussion about it. This is strictly about having the council vote on the matter and then immediately overturning that vote with a different proclamation. So, it, council can still be brought into it, council can still discuss it, and the mayor can still take advice from the council members and make his decision accordingly, and I believe every council member would go along with that. It's just really the matter of having council vote on it and then throwing, essentially throwing the vote out and doing the proclamation anyway. So, it's, it's not terribly limiting.
Okay. I would just say that it's, I only have, I have limited opportunities to speak with council, and it has to be done in public, so that's, that's why I called the meeting. And I don't know where council's going to land on any issue unless I ask for a vote, and so that's why I did what I did. And I believe Mayor Moriarty likely took her cue from what I did and decided to go a different route and just seek input from council, but honestly, given our discussion, I wouldn't really have known where many of you stood unless there was a vote. And if, if I used poor judgment in proclaiming after the vote, there are many ways to remove me from office, and, and that's something that's absolutely, the public's right. I don't have any authority but what's given to me by the public. So, all the voters can get together and, and remove me from office, either by recalling me or simply not electing me. So, I think there, this is, I believe, a reaction to what some council members, and definitely many members of the public, would view as, as poor judgment on my part, and I would just like to say that there are, there are other ways to address that that would not limit future councils, the public, and future mayors.
And as a co-sponsor, Mayor, I, I am, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of council, but that's, it's, I don't wish to see you removed from office. I've spoken with some folks who have commented to that effect, and that is not at all the intent, the motive, and I think frankly, that's a bad idea. I don't, I think that's a little dramatic of a response to. This is the first time that I've been in this situation, and I noticed what appears to be a break in the system or in the process. So, I wanted to bring this forward for council to discuss and consider if they agree that this, that process seems broken, the way that it currently is. And that's all that it is. It was not meant to be a comment on your conduct in office, which I think you know I've been a vocal supporter of your conduct in office. I don't support your removal from office especially, not through this proposed revision. It's merely, again, this appears to be a broken process, and I would like to try to see if council would like to fix it, and that's it.
Is there any other comments from council?
That's exactly how I see it. It's just a process. It's not personality issues at all.
Okay. All right. I have one form up here, and again, if there's anyone that would like to speak on this issue, you're more than welcome to fill out a form. We have received one from Ms. Hedin. Is this the item that you'd like to speak on? Ms. Hedin? Thank you. And comments are limited to five minutes. Thank you. I'm sorry. Comments are limited to five minutes. Thank you.
And I shrunk. Well, I, good evening, mayor and council members. I'm happy to speak before you about the ordinance, because my fear is that if that ordinance had not been overturned since it was a four-to-three vote for, for mandating male, or mask-wearing, I represent 25% of Cottonwood, of the age demographic that suffers the most from COVID. It's my life that's at stake, and shopping while people were not wearing masks was very dangerous for me, and I feel much safer going into stores. It was life-changing for me. I left the state because I was afraid to live here for a while, and I see that Cottonwood is a hotspot now, and we would be on fire if we were not wearing masks. Science proves that mask-wearing is the only thing that will help us all over the world. I was, and I really appreciated listening to the council meeting, because I was surprised at all the, at what people were saying. I mean, like, putting the mask on, it's easy, you know? On, off. You know, I mean, it's just very simple. And Mr. Matthews, I didn't think you would be here, because you said you would not be attending any council meetings, because you really were against that.
Ms. Hedin, if you could focus your-
Well, you're not allowed to talk while I'm talking. I'm sorry. And, and you also correlated Sharia law to, to mandating wearing masks.
Ms. Hedin, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you could try to keep your comments focused to the ordinance that we're reviewing.
The ordinance, okay. Well, I think the ordinance saved my life, and I think that's, it will save 25% of Cottonwood's population, since we are at that age, 65 and over. Thank you very much. I'm sorry if I-
Thank you, ma'am. Did, is there anyone else in the public who would like to address council on this proposal? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ernst?
I am in agreement with masks. I am in that part of the population that's way over 65 and seems to be hurting the most. I made it a personal thing, that I wear my mask any time I'm out. I wear gloves when I go into stores. I use Clorox wipes when I get back in my car to clean myself and my hands and my arms in case I've touched anything, and so far have not had any, I mean, it's just made a difference in my life. The other thing is, is that bothers me, is I see so many people going shopping and taking their little children with nothing on them, and I worry about that. I think we should be wearing these masks when we're out during this COVID until we get a clearance. Thank you.
But you, ma'am, if you could, what we're here to discuss tonight is, again, this is just first reading, is the proposed ordinance. So, if you could try to-
Oh, you just want me to talk about that? I do believe that when a council votes for something, that that's what we should follow, and I do understand why you did it, because I know in your heart you wanted to protect our city and town, and I understand that. And so, I, in my mind, I overlooked that, but I do believe that when council makes the decision, it, it should be followed.
Okay. So, you would be in favor then of the ordinance?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address council? And then, Ms. Jimenez, did we receive anything by email?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I did forward all the mail, all the emails to the council, and I have names of those that oppose it and names of those that indicated their support. Those that oppose it are Toby Olvera, Frank Leopold, Alexandra Helm, Ally Finch, David Finch, Emily Meyer, Lee Worthing, Beverly Hedin. Those that support it are George Rico, Joyce Rogers, and Nancy Rodman.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, this is the first reading, so we'll bring it back at a future date for a vote. Thank you. Ms. Jimenez, if you could, please read ordinance number 682 by title only?
Ordinance number 682, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, amending Title II, Chapter 2.04, mayor of the Cottonwood Municipal Code by deleting section F of Chapter 2.02.030 in its entirety and adding a new section Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Next is item nine, authorizing the city manager to grant an easement for the installation of an electrical transformer and related facilities to serve the new Belfry Brew Pub. of an electrical transformer and related facilities to serve the new Belfry Brew Pub once an appropriate location for those facilities has been identified.
Mr. Mayor, city council, this is one of those opportunities that we're trying to be business-friendly. So if you hadn't heard, we're putting in a beautiful, we, not us, a beautiful, a person who's taken a chance on our communities, putting in a beautiful Belfry Brewery next door. Can't wait till we can have some beer. Well, apparently, it's going to be brewed on-site, and you need to start brewing now. So they're bringing in the brewing equipment that's going to take a significant amount of electricity, and APS has been working with us to find a location to put their transformer, is that the right word, in a location. David, our public works manager, was able to find a location, but we weren't able to get all of that in writing to council in time for the agenda. So we have a location behind this building, no cost to the city. They'll be able to put in their transformer and be able to totally start brewing on time so that they can have a grand opening on Labor Day, I believe is the goal for their grand opening. So this just gives us permission to let APS put in the transformer and the underground work that needs to be done. No cost to the city. It'll be out of our way. David, our public works manager, was very careful to look at a different plans for the parking lot. That's part of the issue back there, is we wanted to make sure that we can have our parking lot paved back there in the future. So they found a location that works for everybody and should not interfere with our future plans. He's here to answer questions if you have specific questions, but-
All right. Any questions for staff? Mr. Housman?
I do, just a couple straightforward questions.
If we could have Mr. Housman come up, please? I think that's you back there, yes.
I know, it's hard to recognize him in a tie, right? Just, because a transformer is above ground, right? So how much space are we talking about? And how, you know, how will it affect our parking, our right-of-way? Because a lot of times, above-ground easements for the transformer, we then have to have space for them to get equipment in to work on it and et cetera.
Correct. Now, the location that they're proposing is in the southwest, or I'm sorry, the southeast corner behind this building. Currently, there's a fence behind that building. They'll be doing the fence work and placing the transformer behind any proposed curb for the parking lot. So one of the things is, we do have proposed parking lot plans for that, and we definitely wanted to make sure that, you know, the transformer was out of the way. APS does have the required safety requirements around the transformer, as well as, there's a existing power pole that's in the middle of the parking lot now. We're putting in future conduits to where we can take that power pole out in the future.
So, second question about the power poles in the park. Will this transformer, will we also be able to piggyback and have power to the park? Or is there a way to kind of try to get lights out at the farmer's market?
Yeah, so the, actually, the new transformer will feed this building here-
Okay.
-as well as the Belfry Brewery. When we, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but when we go through and we take out the power pole, that's when we will feed with an additional transformer at the rear of the parking lot for the new facilities.
So there'll be a second transformer for which new facilities?
That'll be for the park that you're talking about, the youth center, as well as the well that's located behind the clubhouse.
And then has there been any discussion about replacing any of the other power, the poles that are, I'm told, not stable or not safe?
Not replacing, but removing, yes. There has been discussion about removing those, and that would require an additional transformer. As you can see on the existing poles, that there are transformers on there, we would take those to a pad-mounted transformer and not into an aerial pole transformer.
So then to get lights on at the park, what would we need to do?
What kind of lights are you-
Just for lighting at the park.
For lights at the park, we would have to work with APS on those power requirements as far as getting those lights at that facility.
So that's my only question. I don't mean to go too far off-topic, because obviously, this was not agendized for lights at the park, but as part of this transformer process, if there's the opportunity to perhaps start that discussion, we're removing a pole, well, if there is any other interest here from council, I do think that lights at the park would help us utilize that asset more, because we could start events later in the daytime, and, like the farmer's market, get started and have it run later at night. So I just was wondering if this would be a good time to try to start those discussions as well.
And we plan on having those discussions with APS when we started the parking lot improvements. At this time, I wanted to make council aware that that existing pole in the parking lot will not be removed-
Okay.
...at this time. But when we propose the improvements for the parking lot, that's when we'll take down that APS pole.
And just one last clarification, though. My understanding was that pole was not, we were not able to use it anyway, and it needs to be removed.
The pole right now existing is fed through overhead. It's an overhead power source existing. Right now, that transformer is incapable of producing enough power for the Belfry Brewery. Therefore, they have to take additional underground facilities into a pad-mounted transformer to supply APS service to the Belfry Brewery.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, because we, I don't want to get in trouble from our city attorney, but the lighting for the park is on our to-do list. It's on our wish list. It's on our long-term plans for that park, not only for the farmer's market and those types of things, but for safety. So we've been looking at that, and we're trying to find the resources to do that. Original thought a while back with the city engineer was, when we did the parking lot, we could look at adding the lights and making sure that there was electricity run. So this is, I appreciate you bringing it up. It brings it back up to the top, and so that David's aware, but that'll be part of the phase of where we look at the parking lot and the park. You know, there's always the dream of City Hall back there in the very back and creating a town square out here. So there's lots of options, but we, there is a desire, I know there's been a desire from council to put lighting in our park, and it's a long-term plan.
And I understand that. My only comment is, while we're already talking about APS transformers and we're negotiating with the brewery and APS, if there is an opportunity, that is something we can work, I would support that, but I'm not trying to jump up something in the to-do list. It's just, again, if the opportunity strikes.
Yes, ma'am, we understand. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't see the city and if anyone wants to say anything, but this is a perfectly legitimate conversation to have, because it's related to the matter of the transformer for the Belfry. If we're installing electrical facilities, what else those facilities would serve, and whether or not future facilities will be needed or warranted or can be combined with this, is, I think, exactly why the open meeting law is written the way it is.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, then, Mr. Hulse, looks like you want to make a motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I move to authorize the city manager to grant an easement to Arizona Public Service for the installation of an electrical transformer and related facilities on and or over city property to provide electrical service to the new Belfry Brew Pub once an appropriate and mutually acceptable location has been identified.
Second. It's Councilmember Hulse made the motion, mayor seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Howdige?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olensky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, I move we pay the claims.
Second.
Okay, mayor made the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And up next is annual review of the city clerk. We have the opportunity to go into executive session, so, which we will likely do here in a second, so what we're going to do is politely ask everyone to leave. Thanks for being here. So pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1, the council may vote to convene an executive session to conduct its annual performance evaluation of the city clerk, subject to the clerk's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. And Ms. Jimenez, I believe you would like us to go into executive session, correct? Okay?
I move to go into executive session.
Second.
Councilmember Hulse made the motion, Councilmember Wildon seconded it. All in favor?
I'm sorry, what were the motions?
So Councilmember Hulse made the motion, and Wildon seconded it. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.[1737.95]